I'd like to call the Tuesday, September fifteenth, two thousand twenty Papillion City Council Meeting to order. Ms. Brown, would you please take the roll?
Sunday. Mungard. Gaines. Glover. Jaworski. Kluk. Stube. Ingberg.
Would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance? Do we have an affidavit of publication on file?
We do.
And a current copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted in the back of the council chambers. Ms. Powers, Administrator's Report, please.
Thank you. The twenty twenty annual league conference is going to be virtual this year. The conference is spread out over several days in the month of October in one to two hour Zoom sessions. And if any of you council members are interested in attending, just let either Kendra or myself know. And the Sarpy Chambers Economic Outlook twenty twenty will also be held virtually this year. And that's on Tuesday, October sixth. Mayor Black will be giving an update on Papillion during the meeting. And again, just let either of us know if you're wanting to be signed up for that. And a reminder of the meetings with the developer next Tuesday, September twenty second, to discuss different types of residential housing options. And a final reminder to check out the Flights of Honor Tour on display starting at noon this Thursday through four P.M. on Sunday, the twentieth, in the community gym at the Landing. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Motion by Councilman Kluk, seconded by Councilman Jaworski. Do you have any proponents? Any opponents? Council discussion? Please vote. Motion passes. Next is item E one, Ordinance eighteen ninety-six. An ordinance to approve a change of zone from A.G. Agricultural to R four multifamily residential and M.U. mixed use for the property legally described as attractive land being part of the southeast quarter of Section thirty-one Township fourteen north range twelve east of the six P.M. Sarpy County, Nebraska, generally located northwest of South one hundred and twentieth Street and Shram Road. The applicant is Ashbury Hills Development LLC. It's a public hearing and I'll open it. Proponents?
Consulting Group ten nine oh nine Mill Valley Road, Suite one hundred. Here on behalf of the client. Let's see if we got this up and going. Before you is our final plat and zoning. And for the second phase of Ashbury Hills Development, generally located northwest corner of Shram Road and one hundred and twentieth. So just get your bearings. We've got Shram Road here. One hundred and twentieth comes through, hooks back up through Ashbury Farm. This was the first phase of that plat that was approved not quite a year ago. This is now the second phase portion of it. This is part of the missing middle concept that's been brought to Papillion and over by Prairie Queen and kind of coupling some of those those types of uses going forward. We're basically finalizing the mixed use plan. This is an idea of the kind of the phasing, how the overall project looks. There's still an acreage development here on Shram Road. And most of it is single family with some different housing product type. This is the mixed use site plan. So we're focusing just here in the corner for this product. And a lot of this comes down to just finalizing some product to be in the to be in this market based on some research, what this might look like. And so it gives you an idea of the lot arrangement. This will be attached single-family units. And these are the row house concept that we're bringing forward. That's forty-five total lots of a single family, of attached single-family and townhomes. The attached single-family are ranged between two hundred and two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars at this location here. And then the row houses here will be between one hundred and seventy-five and two hundred thousand dollars in value. So not much change to the site plan, the original site plan that was approved with the first phase of the plat. It really just adjusted some site regulators and some setbacks, particularly for these lots as we've worked through that product type as well. We're still working with staff on finalizing that. Just go through what these will look like. We're working on this elevation still, focusing the townhomes, attached single-family in the townhomes here. But there is a product that's on one hundred and eightieth and Harrison. And so I don't think this does that much justice with the with the elevation that's in the mixed use. This is a site that is at one hundred and eightieth and Harrison. There's basically this townhome, this townhome product. These are a little bit different. These are actual six plexes put together. There's a common wall between the front and the back. We've basically split these in half. And it's really focused, we'll be focusing on the type of units that ring around the project. So you have windows on both sides of the unit, front and back. Give you a little bit of idea of how these start to look. You can tell that they're all stacked in between. These are six units together. These are the units that we've basically modeled this attached single-family project or this townhouse product to this project here. And so you can kind of see this as mature development. It's been there, this section of housing's been there for probably fifteen years. And they're now finishing out the remainder of the lots. So there were some, there were some lots here that are being built on now, today. So it is a three-stacked story product. So all garage below, then you walk straight up into the living space with a deck out. And then the bedrooms and other living spaces on that third story. So they are a three-story product. Does a couple of things. There's no basements in them. This is a view from the street as you come in interior to the project. So break up the house with the elevations, colors, and a little bit of the brick and stone along the side. Give you an idea of what the backs look like. There's no access down from the no access down from the patio or the decks there. And so I suppose they could add them if they want, but it's kind of a feature that's is the way they're being built. These will be for sale. And that is the plat. So it gives you an idea of what the the use, the the units themselves will look like. This is a response to some conversations we've had in front of the council in terms of affordable housing. These are units that'll be available for our police officers and teachers and and the workforce that you guys are looking for here in the in the community. Getting down under that two hundred thousand or right at that two hundred thousand mark is incredibly difficult right now in the marketplace. And so one way to do it is to is to get some density. We had a recommendation report. Most of the recommendations were pretty standard. We had three that were related to the addendum to the mixed use agreement. We finalized that. That's why we're here before you today with staff. We were approved at Planning Commission in July twenty-ninth unanimously. And we're in conformance with your comprehensive plan, your zoning, your subdivision regulations. And I would ask for approval, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you very much. Mr. Ingberg?
Just a couple of questions. I'm really familiar with the middle missing housing elements. And it appears that these don't really sit on the same footprint a single-family detached house would sit on. Do they? Aren't they a larger lot?
They're small, they're on their own lot. So if I show you the plat here.
But the footprint is is larger than, let's say, a normal house would be, are they?
These are smaller. There's, it's a smaller lot.
Smaller lot?
Yeah.
Good.
The units are, they're probably twenty-five by twenty-eight. So you're able to to get a smaller footprint by stacking them, stacking them up.
Would it be possible before we finalize any of this? Some of the design elements you have tonight, is it possible to get any of that provided to the council?
Oh, well, I can provide them right now, for sure.
Well, I mean, like a copy of them or something?
For sure, absolutely.
Okay, okay. I appreciate it, thank you.
You bet.
Thank you. Mr. Mungard?
Yeah, I'll just follow up on what Councilman Ingberg was coming along. When we get down, this is on public hearing, so we're not going to vote on this until two weeks from now. But we have
No, I think there's a vote.
Well, we have
No vote?
No vote on this tonight because it's second reading of an ordinance. But then we have we have five, six items, I guess, later on for the same development.
Correct.
Which we would vote on. But when we get to that, when we get to F five, I'm going to make a motion to hold all of those over, continue all of those until we have final reading on this ordinance. And so we vote on all seven of those items at the same time. You know, you're proposing something that's different than what many of us, many of the developments we've had. And I think we'll have more discussion when we get down to the P U.D. So I think it's fair for us to do this as a package, a little bit different than we've done with others, but
Well, the the vote on, the vote on the replat one doesn't have anything to do with this project. So are you suggesting that you're going to ask for a continuance on replat one, which is the P U.D. that I gave testimony to last week? Or are you just saying as it relates to this case?
Well, we're going to talk about the setbacks and the failure to have a ten-foot setback. And I've been suggested that the best time to talk about that is on six. If there's a better time, we'll talk about it. In fact, if we want to talk about it tonight, that's right now, I don't care.
Right.
But I'll ask Mr. Sturzma. You know, procedurally, what, which item is the best one to talk about the five-foot setbacks?
So the the request for a waiver of the of the setback would be in item F six, which is the change of zone to the P U.D. It's the, it's the P U.D. overlay that would allow the designation of specific setbacks.
Okay, but that's the area that he just got done talking about, right?
That is not, that is a different case.
So so this item is the change of zone to the mixed use, which does have a request for reduced setbacks, but it's part of a mixed use development agreement. And it's for the duplex units and the townhome units.
Correct.
Well, okay, then five, seven, eight, nine, they all relate to this ordinance eighteen ninety-six? The same area?
So that is correct. Five, six, and seven, eight, and nine are all are all part of that P U.D. portion of the development.
Which one is related to Lot one sixty-six, though? Isn't that the first amendment to the subdivision agreement? The detachment? Is that included in this mixed use? Thought we did that separately.
The the mixed use agreement, you would, you would put up an illustration earlier that
Yeah, that's what I was trying to find.
Otherwise, I have one here you can use.
So so specific to this case, in cases five.
Real quick, just for sake of time, and I know there's some thought process going on. We're in public hearing on F five. And so there's no action on five because it's just a public hearing.
Yep.
I'm going to go ahead, if there's no objection, we're going to go ahead and finish the public hearing on five. Because then we've got a, I mean, on E one. We'll finish the public hearing on E one. We'll go ahead with the other E items and the first Fs because we have people in the audience. Then when we get to F five, we can pick up this part of the discussion. Because I think you're thinking, I think Mark's thinking, I think Tom's thinking.
Yep.
All right.
Thank you.
So related to item E one, are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? I'll close the public hearing. Item E two, Ordinance eighteen ninety-seven, an ordinance to approve the sale and conveyance of approximately zero point two five five acres of city property to Daniel and Louise Greco. I'll open the public hearing. Do we have any proponents? Do we have any opponents? Close the public hearing. Item E three, Ordinance eighteen ninety-eight, an ordinance to amend Chapter one seventeen of Papillion Municipal Code to increase the number of allowed licenses for retail sale of fireworks from ten to twelve to clarify that the city council can approve special fireworks permits and display fireworks permits and to make the chapter more concise and consistent. Open the public hearing. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Close the public hearing. Item F one, Resolution R twenty zero one zero nine, a request for approval of a special use permit to authorize the construction of a principal structure within the downtown overlay district pursuant to Section two oh five one eighteen A one and a parking facility pursuant to two oh five one eighteen A six to add an additional dwelling unit with a garage and associated parking to expand the multifamily residential use established on the property legally described as the north two-thirds of Lot seven and all of Lot eight, Block twelve, Papillion, generally located at two forty-three North Jefferson. The applicant is Mark Jaxick. Mr. Mungard?
Yes, I'll make a motion to lay this over for, to the next meeting in two weeks. The planning director and Mr. Glover and I have had a meeting with Mr. Jaxick. You know, we we reached out to him. He was very accommodating, came in, we had a very productive meeting and basically discussed our pros and cons. We've reached some agreement on some of it. We're waiting for some plans to be redrawn. We have some further discussion we want to have. We're going to have a meeting, another meeting between now and in two weeks. I think we can come up with some, something that's productive. I know that this was opposed by a good neighbor, a good number of the neighbors. And I think that if we take another two weeks, we're going to come up with something that will benefit everybody.
So we have
It'll be in three weeks to the next meeting. How's that?
So a motion on the floor to table until the next meeting, which will be October sixth. Seconded by Councilman Stube. Do we have any proponents? Do we have any opponents? Any council discussion? Please vote on the motion to table until ten six. Mr. Gaines?
Eight, eight, zero, nays.
Motion passes. Item F two, Resolution R twenty zero one five three, a public hearing and a vote. A resolution to approve a Class C liquor license for OPC Group LLC doing business as Cops Pizza Company, seventy-four seventy-four Town Center Parkway, Suite one oh one Papillion, and a manager application for Christopher J. Cop. It's a public hearing, I'll open it. Proponents?
My name is Christopher Cop.
And you're getting a lot of excitement on social media about your place.
Yeah.
Take a few minutes and just give a quick commercial and background on the business.
So I've been in restaurants for about sixteen years, ever since I was sixteen. I was running about thirty restaurants in Kansas City and just decided, I was talking to my dad one day and he just was like, let's just do our own thing. So, you know, we spent about a month making up recipes and stuff in our, in his kitchen. And then started doing market research and Omaha is where we ended up. And so moved here a year and a week ago with my wife and two kids. And it's just been kind of, everything's been great since then. A little, a little shaky around February, March, April. But once we got through that, it's, it's been going well and we're really excited to be in Papillion, really excited.
I think people are excited they're moving into the, where the Nebraska Brew was on the, on the main street in Shadow Lake. And so again, getting a, getting a lot of good press on social media, so. Do we have any other proponents? Do we have any opponents? I'll close the public hearing. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution R twenty zero one five three? I think it was kind of unanimous. I'll pick one, Ms. Kluk, seconded by Councilman Jaworski. Any discussion? Please vote.
Eight, eight, zero, nays.
Motion passes. Do you have an opening date?
It's looking like October fourth.
Wonderful.
Construction's a tad behind, so.
Welcome to Papillion.
Thank you so much. Have a great day.
Item F three, Resolution R twenty zero one five four, a public hearing and a vote. Resolution to approve a Class C liquor license for Tahida LLC doing businesses Ika Ramen, seventy-nine oh two Town Center Parkway, one oh one, Papillion, Nebraska, and a manager application for Jose D'Angelo. And I probably messed up all of those names. This is a public hearing. Do we have any proponents? Is the applicant here? Do we have any opponents? I'll close the public hearing. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution R twenty zero one five four? Motion by Councilman Stube, seconded by Councilman Jaworski. Any discussion? Please vote.
Seven, yes, one nay by Sunday.
Motion passes. Item F four, Resolution R twenty zero one five five, a public hearing and a vote. A resolution to approve a special use permit to allow custom manufacturing as a principal use and authorize the construction of a two-vehicle parking facility within the downtown overlay district pursuant to Section two oh five one eighteen A six on the property legally described as the south sixty feet of Lot seven, Block thirty-three, Beatles Edition, excluding right-of-way, generally located at five twenty-seven North Washington. The application is Kahuta Earlbacher, apologize. This is a public hearing. Proponents? And if you'd state your name for the record?
Sean Earlbacher.
Kechu Earlbacher.
Can you just share quickly what you're doing?
Sure. We've been in, we own a retail pharmacy business and primarily compounding. And we compound anywhere from topical human to veterinarian. And currently, we're in Papillion. We're up on Golden Gate Drive. And so we're just moving locations.
Thank you. Do we have any other proponents? Do we have any opponents? Seen none. I'll close the public hearing. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution R twenty zero one five five? Motion by Councilman Ingberg, seconded by Councilman Glover. Any discussion? Mr. Mungard?
Yeah, I I'm all in favor of this, but I just want to point out something to the council. This requires a special use permit to install a slab of concrete to park two cars on. That Jefferson Street location where we were talking about the garage, there was some discussion about if we didn't approve that, would a special use permit be required if Mr. Jaxick wanted to put a garage there without the apartment? I saw these two situations. And I thought, you gotta, hold on here. You mean our ordinance requires a special use permit to put in a slab of concrete, but it doesn't require a special use permit to build a huge, ugly old garage in the downtown district? I said, how could that be? Well, it has some, the planning director explained to me it has something to do with the overall use and zoning, et cetera. And so I have no problem with this. But I I still can't wrap my mind around why in ordinance the special use permit requirement for, that we have there to protect our downtown district? Why it doesn't apply to a big garage, but it does apply to a slab of concrete? Maybe that situation will never come up again. But thank you. Your situation just happened to come at a timing when I was trying to sort this out and I said, this doesn't make any sense. Maybe it'll never amount to anything, but I just wanted to draw it to everybody's attention. That is exactly what's happening. Thank you.
And on that note, I think we'll, sooner than later, I think you'll see us revisiting the downtown chapter of the comprehensive plan. I think that'll be an opportunity then to revisit as we've been learning about downtown, some of the things and then maybe some ordinance changes. But thank you for coming downtown, seeing reuse of some of the houses into these businesses and keeping the character of them. That's been an important thing for Papillion, so thank you for what you're doing. Any other discussion? Please vote.
Eight, eight, zero, nays.
Motion passes. Thank you very much. Item F five, Resolution R twenty zero one five six, a public hearing and a vote. A resolution to approve, to approve a revised preliminary plat for the property legally described as attractive land being part of the southeast quarter of Section thirty-one Township fourteen north range twelve east of the six P.M. Sarpy County, Nebraska, generally located northwest of one hundred and twentieth Street and Shram Road. The applicant is Ashbury Hills Development. Now, we're picking back up on the conversation that started. So I'm going to look to maybe Mr. Mungard and Sturzma to finish that conversation. And you mentioned something about tabling a package. But if that's the case, then I'm going to have a question, I think, for legal counsel. We've advertised for public hearing, so then if if they do do that, then do we still need to go through on the public hearing? So we'll think through that. Mr. Mungard?
I'm going to request that we go ahead with the public hearing. Let's, let's hear everything. But let's continue the matter so we have a vote on the whole package. Here, here's the deal. The whole Ashbury Hills development, no matter what phase you're talking about, has been quite an issue of one problem after another. It may turn out just wonderful. And you may get a hundred percent unanimous votes. But I don't like the idea of splitting all this stuff up and that we have to make decisions with the resolutions and then come back in three weeks and make a decision on the ordinance. It seems kind of, well, that defeats the purpose of, you know, it kind of makes the decision on the ordinance inconsequential because we've already decided to approve all the resolutions. So I'm just saying, let's package this. Let's get Ashbury Hill all put together in one package, vote on everything at the same time, up, down, whatever, and then move forward. And so I want, so it's going to be that, my motion will be that, and I don't know if this is the right time to make it, but let's go ahead with the public hearing on five, six, seven, eight, nine.
Actually, the only public hearing is five. I think all the others are just proponents.
I've got a problem with us packaging a bunch of applications together when we make specific applications for specific things. If if there's an issue with one application to lump the other application, I mean, I got a procedural issue with that. The the current public hearings for a preliminary plat. And your, so your zoning and your final plat and all that does come together as one package, if I'm correct. So you, you, you aren't making the ordinance inconsequential in terms of the change of zone because those things, that, everything catches up with that. The, what's before you right now in this public hearing is for the preliminary plat only. So you're still getting another bite at the apple, so to speak, when we come back forward with the final plat.
F five is the preliminary plat.
That's correct. And so that being said, I, you know, if if we have that discussion as it relates to the mixed, missing middle, mixed use request, and we want to talk through that, I'm open to that. But I I will have an objection to lumping the replat one and the P U.D. With, it's just not how we apply for it. It's not the way it works when you have a large face project. Unfortunately, it doesn't come all together at one time. I understand your concern, but procedurally.
Well, just for, just for clarity, and I'll look to Mr. Sturzma to validate. I want to make sure everybody's clear on the discussion that's occurring. F five is the preliminary plat and its phases two through five.
Correct.
Then when you jump to F six, and I think, Mr. Mungard, you said nine, that's all related to replat one. So it is a different item. Now, is it tied to the conversation you have? I'm not sure, but I want to make sure. F five is two through five, and that's a preliminary. F six through nine is replat one. So if you're thinking of a package, those are the package.
I see your point. Here's my, here's my thought. And I'll ask you maybe your view. If we don't approve the P U.D., what good is the rest of it? Six, seven, seven, eight, and nine?
Well, the, because the, six, seven, eight, and nine that relate to the P U.D., you mean?
Yeah. If we don't agree, if we don't approve the rezoning, the change of zone, what goods the rest of it?
Well, if you take those all together and you vote all, if you, if we have that discussion all tonight and that's vote, and I would agree with you if that's the case. Because the P U.D. technically is your change of zone. So if that's the direction, then well, let's talk about it, but
Well, okay, okay.
You see what I'm saying? I mean, I
Yeah, and I, and I'm willing to, okay, I see what you're talking about, the preliminary plat. And maybe let's go ahead with five. Vote five up or down, I don't care. And then we'll pick up on six and and that's where I'm going.
Okay, fair enough.
Okay. So we're going to stay on item F five, public hearing. The comments from the previous that you made, we will carry over for the minutes. But anything else?
Nope, I'll be available for questions.
Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents?
Hang on, Eric, because if this is the P U.D.
This, this, I'm going to close
Not the P U.D. because he said it was the P U.D.
No, this is the preliminary. I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing and we'll get the motion, then we'll jump to council discussion. But we'll make sure, we'll take time to make sure it's clear what we're doing. So I'll close the public hearing. This is the preliminary plat for phases two through five. So is our motion to approve Resolution R twenty zero one five six? Motion by Councilman Ingberg? Seconded by Councilman Gaines. Council discussion, so I do want to make sure Motion by Councilman Ingberg, second by Councilman Gaines. Council discussion, so I do wanna make sure that we're real clear on what's happening. So, Mr. Sturzma, just for sake of clarity for the council and even public that's watching, and Mr. Thielen, just to make sure we're all on the same page. Can you share quickly what F five is? It's the preliminary plat, but it's phases two through five. So what is this in relation to the P U D? Just so there's clarity.
Well, I'll start. We have a lot of items on the agenda tonight. On this particular item, we've got two separate tracks running at the same time. So it is confusing to have so many things. And so, I will try to clarify, but I would ask Mr. Thielen, representing the development, to correct me if I make a mistake. So, two through five. I wanna make sure I get this right. Yeah, I was wondering if you could put the phasing plan up on the screen.
Two, three, four, and five. What is in yellow, what is in orange, I'm sorry, Mark, is what was phase one? And what was before you, not in the public hearing, was what we called phase two.
Is that clear?
Is that clear, everything?
So I guess I would, I would ask you to confirm. Is there anything on this phase that is part of the P U D that's requesting a reduced side yard setback?
There is not.
But these are the row houses.
These, this is the preliminary plat for the row house. That is correct. Now, my final plat, change of zone and mixed use will come next week.
Well, I kinda wanna talk about this because this same concept was brought forward to us about eight or ten years ago. And as a council, it got turned down because they didn't like the way it was set up. The way you gotta walk straight up the stairs where the garage is sitting out front. Alls you see is garage at these things. And it really rang a bell when you said one hundred and eightieth and Harrison. That's when I said, I know exactly what these are. And to me, putting these by probably one of the best neighborhoods we have in Papillion, are you kidding me? I'm not gonna support this. I'm gonna tell you that right now, because I know what they are. They're very unattractive is the best way to say this. They tried, we tried, a developer tried bringing this in eight to ten years ago, and it got turned down. This is not a good fit for where you're going, in my mind.
Why not?
That's probably the best neighborhood, Ashbury Farms is probably the best neighborhood we have in Papillion. And you're gonna put these right next to?
Next to it, it's almost a mile away. It's out on Shram Road. It's half a mile away.
I was out there today. Shram Road and Ashbury Farms, pretty close.
Well, we butt up against it, and we transitioned from Ashbury Farms to seven hundred thousand plus dollar houses to Gold Coast Road, and we transitioned down and around the major arterials. My question to you is, where do you want your workforce to live? Because currently, right now, you can't build or buy a house in Papillion for less than four hundred thousand dollars. So that would be my question. When we stood up here for Belterra a month, four months ago, the request was bring us some housing that our teachers and police officers and firefighters and those that work at places that aren't making a hundred, two hundred thousand dollars a year, and here's where we're at.
But, okay, so I agree with that, but the developer that developed these out on one hundred and eightieth and Harrison, and I think there's some out on like one hundred and sixty-eighth and Ford or one hundred and eightieth.
Triton Homes.
They went belly up.
They did, correct.
There's a reason for that. People don't wanna walk straight up to the sky.
That's not why they went belly up. You can't, you cannot, you cannot, if you are a day late and a dollar short on these units right now, you cannot even, you can't even get a sniff at them. They have seventy to a hundred showings in the first three days these go up on the market because of the price point. Unfortunately, there's just not a lot of options for those people that need to be at a price point of two hundred thousand or less. And I do not see that changing anytime soon.
Well, it's gonna get worse.
Lumber has gone up six hundred percent.
It's gonna get worse.
Well, density is the cure. And at some point, we have to accept that. The only way I'm able to provide housing for those people, it's not fair that somebody who makes fifty or sixty thousand dollars a year can't live at one hundred and twentieth and Shram? Simply because we can't provide housing for them, when we know we can, we know we can. You have to sacrifice something with affordability, with price. Some of it is space, some of it is exterior. If you look at these units, yes, are they stacked up? Is there garage? That is true. But if it's landscaped properly, the way we have it shown in the mixed use plan, they're turned sideways to the arterial street.
So how big is your driveway? How big are the driveways on those?
Well, there is, what is it, eighteen feet or sixteen, whatever the driveway.
Eighteen foot long?
Uh, wide.
How long?
Uh, the driveway width.
Because the ones I seen at one hundred and eighty, at Harrison, you don't have two cars in.
Yeah, you'd wanna have two cars. Twenty-two feet.
So when you make this density and you make this going straight up and you make everything so small, you can't even put cars on the streets. So how do people have people come over?
They park in their, well, no, the roadway's twenty-five feet wide. Uh, I think I put them in here, here. We meet the parking regulations. But if you look how these are situated, that's why they're not lined on the street. They're actually turned. So this will be all landscaped through here. It's all green space. And we're bricking the whole front. It's not a row of garages as you drive by on Shram Road. It's not even a row of garages as you drive by in Edgewater. And it's done for a reason.
Well, you're gonna have to give me some better pictures, so like, I mean, because I gotta see this before I vote for something like this, because just to be honest, everything I do as a city councilman here is, it's not what I do today. It's what this place looks like twenty years from now that I approved today.
Okay.
That's what I base a lot of my stuff on. And for me to vote for something like this, I need to see it. I need to see some pictures other than, other than that, because that's not really telling me anything.
Well, I'm gonna ask you to go out to drive to one hundred and eightieth and Harrison, because that's the best.
I've been out there, and that's what scares me.
Well, so what you're telling me is I should not bring anything, tell my clients not to bring anything forward, but high-end, single-family house and apartments? That's what you're asking for? Because that's where I'm at.
There's, this can't be the only option.
On that topic, I'm gonna intervene real quick. On that specific topic, philosophically, the bigger picture, we are planning a council retreat on housing types to have that broader conversation, the philosophical one. So I wanna intervene a little bit there, because we're not gonna solve that part tonight, so we'll get back specifically on F five. Mr. Jaworski, anything else?
That's it. I'm good.
Okay, Mr. Mungard.
Okay, okay. This is a special, this is a special we just had.
I wanted to lay this over. I got two problems. One, I don't know who's right, Jaworski or you. I don't know what the long-term benefits are and detriments. And I think that he's made some points that deserve us to take some time and think about, because we're talking long-term. And then, secondly, we're talking modifying a very important part of the planning of Papillion. That's the ten-foot setbacks. Ten-foot setbacks has been a very integral part of what has created the image of Papillion over the years as the special place, this place where, you know, you get high-quality places. You know, at some point, that might conflict with what you're talking about, the missing middle and the affordable housing. It might.
It is the single biggest reason why you guys have four hundred-plus thousand dollar houses.
That's what I'm hearing. That's what I'm hearing. And I'm all for filling in that missing, that middle. And I'm all for, row houses can be a good answer. But what I'm seeing here is this is about the fourth or fifth time that we've had one of these row house-type developments come in. You mentioned Belter.
Belterra.
That we've, that we've modified, without any discussion about the ten-foot setbacks. We approved.
I haven't modified anything in Belterra.
Yeah.
It's all been approved per your zoning.
Okay, but the setbacks.
They're the same. They're ten feet.
Well, we have North Shore, we have Granite, Granite Lake. I think there's a couple of.
Those are the villa communities you're just.
The villa communities. Here's my problem. Here we are, moving down the road of approving developments that have areas that have five-foot setbacks. And we're having no discussion about why we're doing that. We have no philosophy behind that. We have no purpose announced behind that. And you're fair to say, well, what can I tell my clients? And I say, yeah, what can you tell them? I don't know. It's a crap shoot. Will they approve a five-foot setback or not? I don't know. It's because we have not done the effort to lay out when it makes sense to have a five-foot setback as opposed to ten-foot. And all I'm saying is, we have this ordinance, we have two ordinances coming along. I'm saying, stop. Let's pause for three weeks, figure out, you know, if we have a direction we're going, or if we don't have a direction, do we not care if we have a direction? And then vote on, you know, changing, modifying, going away from the ten-foot setbacks for a good reason. You might, you might be the guy telling us the good reason. And that's all I'm saying, is that, that's, I don't know the answer. If you force me to vote tonight, I vote against it, because I don't know the answer. In three weeks, I hope to have a better view of what's the answer, because I don't wanna keep charging forward and just approving developments because a developer comes in and says, I wanna get this going. That's why I've asked for the layovers.
Well, I'll make two comments, I guess, and I understand what you're saying. But you do have a comprehensive plan, and you do have zoning regulations, and you do have a process by which we can go through and amend side yard setbacks specifically, and they've been specifically done only for retirement-type villas, the fifty-five and plus. And the reason why that is, is because those people wanna have their yard work included with their dues, and obviously, there's a maintenance component to that. They don't need as much yard. Quite frankly, we're starting to do some in other places where their backyards are ten feet, ten to fifteen feet. We still have twenty-five foot rears and fronts. So people are trying to get denser because they don't want the maintenance. So that is, there is a good reason why we have done it. You have a process now that we've worked through with Mr. Sturzma over the last several years. I did Jerry's stuff at North Shore, and it was above the same conversation and the same answers. There are always, people don't wanna take care of the side yards. It reduces the amount of lots. It makes them more expensive. No, don't get me wrong. Those Villa products, four fifty plus. So this idea that people are downsizing, for me, is a little crazy, but that's why that is. But your comprehensive plan talks about affordability. We are speaking to a component of your comprehensive plan. And beauty, and what looks good is in the eye of the beholder. All I would ask is, we're trying to, the market tells you what wants to be here. And you can ask any single home builder or developer in this entire Great O'Hama area, and they're gonna tell you the same thing. They need workforce housing. And workforce housing unfortunately doesn't come in big, huge gables and a bunch of brick and stone and these really nice custom home layouts, because it's simply too expensive. And I think there's a way to do it, and I think your mixed-use zoning process, which we're doing here right now with this particular product, is an avenue to do it to ensure that from the public street, from the public street, you are not seeing nothing but garages, that you have some increased landscaping. And there's a way to offset the housing type with additional amenities like that, because my density in my development allows me the ability to take some of those dollars that would normally be put into my lots and my infrastructure and put them towards some of those external components that reduces concerns with all garage. Because, look, I'll be the first one to agree with you. All garage is not the best look. But it can be done in a way that you're like, you know, that doesn't look bad. And provide a service to a part of this community that's not being served on the housing side of things.
Okay.
So that's my statement.
And I'm gonna agree with a lot of what you say. What I don't want is I don't wanna come down the road and have a developer coming in here and say, we had one a few months ago. We had a developer in here, maybe the same guy, who was telling us that he could not meet our ratios that we wanted, because we were asking for too expensive. That part of the problem was the ten-foot setbacks. That was just too expensive. So the next, you know, we start approving these things, and the next thing we know, we got a developer who's in here saying, well, I wanna buy, I wanna build a hundred and fifty thousand dollar houses, which might be a good thing.
It's a great thing.
But I can't do it on the size of lots you're doing.
Correct.
And then we're put into that, we're in the corner then. Well, if we're gonna get into the corner, let's at least know why we're going there.
And I totally understand that position. But your ten-foot side yards were based on a fire code component when you guys had a rural fire department, is my understanding. And I will tell you, the single biggest killer to home pricing is the width of a lot. It's just a fact. And so, it makes your streets more expensive. It makes your sewer more expensive. It makes your maintenance more expensive. It adds cost to everything.
Mr. Ingberg.
Oh, geez, I got overwhelmed there for a minute. First of all, we all need to stop, take a breath, and I'll tell you why. I'm gonna come across holier than now, and I don't mean it this way. I've been interested in this middle missing housing for a very long time. I've read everything I could find about it. And here's what our problem is as we sit here tonight, as I see it. We're trying to put square pegs in round holes. And the reason that is, is primarily because our zoning is based, is density-based zoning. The type of housing we're, I think we're all looking for, to do it right, as far as I'm concerned, Mark can tell me if I'm really out there in space, what would work better for us is to go to form-based zoning. At least, if not totally, a mix of the two. Because when you go to form-based rather than density, then you're not concerned so much with, except for people talk about density tonight and those things. But with form-based, then you start looking at different styles, not just the styles we're looking at tonight, but we're looking at different types of housing, so you got different sizes of lots. And while, Tom, I agree with you, I'm sorry, Councilman Mungard, I agree with you as far as the ten-foot setbacks, but there are numerous ways to build quality, functional housing units and do it with smaller setbacks. But the key to it is, we have to have zoning in place to address it, number one. Number two, we have to have some design standards as well. You know, we've, for years, have looked at design standards for commercial buildings and for housing to a large extent. But this is kind of a different ballgame, and we're kinda putting the cart ahead of the horse a little bit, to your detriment, because you're selling something that's not entirely new to us, because the first one in the United States, actually, of the middle, missing middle housing, was Jerry Reamer's addition out there by the lake. That was the first in the United States of America. Most people don't realize that. And I will tell you, as he gets into phase two and three, you're gonna start seeing different styles of housing. And the only problem I have with what you have tonight is, I would like to see, as Mr. Jaworski said, the way they're laid out, because there's such a variety of sizes and layouts, whether they're alley-side or facing the street, of this kind of housing, that I would like to have an idea what that might look like and how that may function. What I don't wanna do is, I've heard people on the council say, we're sick and tired of the big gargantuan apartment, multifamily apartment complexes. We want something different. I think we have an opportunity to do that. But to me, middle missing housing is that you take a big apartment complex, you take a cleaver, and just chop it in chunks and put them on separate lots. That isn't truly what I think I'm after. I want a little creativity here. You know, we talk about Papillion being a special place. And it can remain a special place by having some more types of housing, and something that's of different design. But we have to have some things in place, or at least consider some things as far as zoning is concerned, rather than based just on density. It's gotta be based on form, form-based zoning to a certain extent. And if Mark thinks I'm barking, the flag director thinks I'm barking up the wrong tree, he's more than welcome to say so, but but I do think we're trying to put a square peg in a round hole here. But I find it difficult to sit here and say. But I, I find it difficult to sit here and say, um, we, we, to a certain extent, really dislike developers coming in and saying, we have to have a multifamily apartment complex in the middle of a development to make the numbers work. That's where people around this table start to get a little bit agitated. Well, if you don't like that, then we're going to have to do some things internally to make these kind of developments work. Because they could work in the middle of existing housing, uh, if, if lots become available. But you got to have some creativity, and, and the people that come before us have to, have to realize that we have certain expectations. Uh, I don't think, and I'm not talking against your development here, I don't think it's wise to just say, this is a different kind of housing, let's plunk it down. There's more to it than that.
So. I got to have rules I can play by, guys, that are consistent and something that my guys can rely on.
Mr. Jaworski.
It's going to touch base to what's going on at Prairie Queen, because that's affordable housing. And they're all, what, what they're going to start building is, yes, and it's going to be.
He's a market rate.
It's all different houses. It's not big buildings that kind of, like Mr. Ingberg said, kind of look like chopped-up apartments. I'm sorry, but that's.
It's, there's, there's a, there's a, there's a deconstructed multifamily-type concept that's out there, um, for sure. I wouldn't say that's what this product is, but there is opportunity for that, it's being done all over the place. Um, I would, I guess, disagree that Prairie Queen is affordable. It is, it is incredibly expensive to live out there.
In some, some spots, there are, you got the gated community, of course. But I also wanted to say one more thing, and then I'm done. There is affordable housing that we built behind Walmart. It was eight years, ten years ago, maybe a little longer. But they're, they have the ten-foot offsets, they have a hundred and fifty thousand dollar houses. It can be done.
That was before the downturn, though. I did that, Stockland's Hollow, I did that one, too.
But, but, but what I'm saying is, it's, I don't want the city to be blamed for the ten-foot offsets. That's not what's driving up the houses. What's driving up the houses is the lumber prices. And with what's going on in Oregon, California, Washington State, the price is going to get crazier higher than it is now. So that's.
That's not what's driving up houses. Uh, housing costs have been driving us specifically over the last ten years, based on land pricing and specifically the cost of infrastructure. And I can show you the relationship between the cost of a home and the price of infrastructure all day long throughout the entire greater Omaha area. And I can show you a per-front-foot price between Papillion and Gretna and La Vista, well, La Vista doesn't really do greenfield, and Omaha, potentially, and Elkhorn, and you will see a stark difference, based solely on just side yard setbacks. It's a fact. Now, is it everything to it? Absolutely not. The beautiful part about being able to do larger projects and things, when you start thinking out of the box, is if I can do some of this within a development, you can get also what you want on the bigger homes, and it's called a blended project. We don't do a lot of them around here, uh, because of just the way that, that we do development. But there are developers that are trying to do some of this stuff, and I would agree, you're zoning your subdivision regulations, and this is across the entire area, make it difficult to do some of this stuff. But you have an opportunity to, to meet the needs of a, a group of people that have been desperately looking for affordable housing in the, in this community. And while it's not perfect right now, I would encourage, and I'm, we can talk about labor, and that's fine, I'm fine with that, if that's what the council would like to see, and has come back in a week or two. Um, but I would encourage you to look at it for your, basically, your code is set now. This is through the mixed-use, uh, uh, district that allows us to write code. And, well, this will come back in a week, and, and we can talk about it some more, and I'll get you some of these pictures, and we can go from there. But I need to be judged based on the zoning you currently have in place, your subdivision regulations and your overlays. And then if, if we, I would, want us to get in a room and talk philosophically off the record, I would be more than happy to do that as well. Probably not here as the, where to do it, but it is a great debate. So I appreciate the, I appreciate the candor, and I appreciate the conversation.
Ms. Clu.
I just would like to comment that I think many of us sitting on this city council need to stop thinking about what we did ten years ago, what we did twelve years ago, whatever, whatever our duration is. And we need to stop and ask what the people buying the houses now are, that are coming into the market. What are the people that are twenty-one and twenty-six? What do they want? Because they're a different style than what most of us sitting on here are. You know, what we look at and say, wow, they're on top of their neighbors, and that's way too close, and it's all garages. They're going, awesome, less upkeep, I can travel more. They're saying, great, my friends can move in close to me, and we can all walk. We don't have to drive six blocks, because we don't like the big areas. So I think we need to do a little bit, as Councilman Ingberg and Councilman Mungard have suggested, and we need to get in a room, and we need to really evaluate, is what Papillion's been doing for the last thirty years, fifteen years, what's really meeting the market. The other thing I think we need to really look about is, what do we need to do? We've been very fortunate in that we've brought a lot of industry into Papillion. But yet, we see stores open and we see stores close. We see them open and we see them close. Sometimes it's because of the national chain. But talk to some of these employers who are trying to hire your entry-rate employee. We don't have a lot of high schoolers working like we used to. And right now, we don't have affordable housing for people who want to start in entry-level retail or entry-level police work. We are doing a certain amount of disservice to our own citizens, because we're not giving the variety. We're not meeting the needs of the younger people wanting to come in in their twenties and thirties in entry-level jobs. We're not helping our businesses. So I welcome what Councilman Mungard and Councilman Ingberg have said. Let's look at our philosophy, because we need to evaluate what we're doing. And the sooner we can get it done, the better we will be serving our city of Papillion.
Mr. Ingberg.
Well, I don't want to belabor the point, as I start to belabor the point. Um, you know, I think the other thing to consider, and, and Councilmember Clu kind of mentioned it in passing, um, whether we like it or don't like it, the viruses have some, have some effect on housing. Um, by that, uh, people by nature, not so much in Nebraska, but a lot of other places are, have been forced to, um, be cor, be set, set aside in their homes, and they're starting to realize neighborhoods again. You know, we've always prided Papillion on being a larger community that still has a small community feel. Well, I think in order to preserve that to a certain extent, and I don't know if the mayor would agree with me, but we have to have some variety, and we've talked about it in retreats, some variety in our inventory of housing. Affordable doesn't mean cheap. Affordable doesn't mean junky, small, little places. Um, what it does mean is, is some creative ways to have some designs that, that will work for entry-level people, or people that just choose to live on a smaller scale, or don't want to bother with homeownership necessarily, a, a single-family detached home. Doesn't mean we can't have both. You can still have the single-family detached with ten-foot side yards and, and half-a-million-dollar price tags. It's not either-or, but you can, but I think we need to start looking at both. Uh, and have some variety, uh, available, uh, to preserve what we've built here. And I think that's going to be difficult in some respects, because we're used to having a mindset, and let's face it, we've had it nice in the fact that we are lucky enough to be so attractive. We haven't had to go out and really fight and dig really hard for housing to put new development. But I think as time goes along, as we go into the future, probably long, maybe long after my time, but if you're not creative in what you're allowing in your inventory of your housing, you're going to start losing interest in a certain portion of the population.
Let me try to bring it back together then. Um, so, a lot of good discussion, and it's discussion we've been having, affordable housing, of housing types. We even talked about bringing a consultant in to facilitate it, this very conversation. Um, we've been updating the comprehensive plan and having some of this discussion. So what's occurring tonight's not new. We just have a development in front of us that's really bringing it to a head, I think, um, and maybe speeding it up a little bit more than we anticipated. So with that being said, Mr. One, thank you for engaging in the conversation.
You are welcome.
The, it'll be the will of the council, but I want your opinion. Um, we got a full council, we get eight people. Items need a majority, five to pass.
Sure.
I'm not counting votes, so I have no clue what it's going, but you know the discussion. So your desire, would it be to take a vote tonight, or maybe to table it, as Mr. Mungard mentioned?
On specific, on.
On F-five.
Correct. It's a preliminary plat.
Right.
Okay, so, wow, I understand, but it's a preliminary, like, you know, that process goes forward, I still got to come back and final plat it.
But I think there's a, and I'll look to Mr. Sturzmann, I believe there's a ramification. If a preliminary gets turned down, there's a ramification to that, that I want to make sure we understand, that, the timing of when it can come back. So I'll look for your opinion, and then we'll look maybe what the next step is.
Well, I, I want to clarify where we at, we're at on the agenda. So we.
We're on F-five.
We have already approved the change of zone for this component, where we're looking at the, the mixed-use portion of the development, which would be the, the townhomes and the duplexes. We're now on the preliminary plat. If that were to get approved, then you would have to come back with the final plat and the mixed-use development agreement, which would have the regulators for.
Correct.
The design of the housing and the things like that on those duplexes and townhomes.
Correct.
So that's where you would have another bite at the apple on the design and the lot layout, to some degree, with the final plat.
Correct.
But if for any reason a preliminary plat is turned down, um, is there a ramification to that? Can it then be brought back immediately, after some discussion? Or is there a restriction on a denied preliminary plat when it can come back again? I'm just going off of old memory that there's an issue there.
I think that's zoning, but.
Yeah, I don't know that on the preliminary plat, there's a, that there's a, there, you're, you're exactly right. If a project, and I believe it's a change of zone, if it gets turned down, then I think there's a six-month waiting period.
Yeah, change of zone.
Unless there's a substantial change.
Correct. My desire would be to move the preliminary plat forward, um, because it, it keeps the process going, it gives us a sense of, of some certainty. Doesn't tie your hands at all, at all. We still can have this discussion and, and talk about this, uh, zoning and the plat as it comes forward.
Yep.
Uh, so, I'd, I'd be open for a vote. If, 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 I got a bunch of people shaking their heads, know that we need to lay this over, which I'm not seeing, but, um, then, and you give me some indication that that's what the will of the council is, and discussion outside of this hearing, then.
I don't think we'll know the will of the council until you take a vote. That's why I want to be careful leading up to the vote.
Okay.
Mr. Mungard.
I'll back off a little bit. Um, I will not ma, I don't know if I've even made the motion, but I will not ask for a layover of the preliminary plat.
Okay.
I understand what you're saying. But it was my understanding that if we approve a preliminary plat, and then he comes back with a final plat that does not materially change that, our hands are tied. We cannot turn down a final plat that matches the preliminary plat.
Mr. Sturzmann.
If I'm right, no, I'll just say, if I'm right about that, I'll tell you right now. You come back with something that, that, that we turned down, and then we get into an argument about whether we, uh, whether we could have turned it down because you matched the preliminary plat. Well, that ain't going to, that's not going to work.
Well, it's not how we do, it's not how I do business.
Hold on. Mr. Sturzmann, there was a question there, can you clarify it?
Well, I, I would agree with you that there is some, if, if a final plat is consistent with the preliminary plat, then you're, there's an obligation to, to honor that. But on, on this one, I think what I'm hearing, the concern is on, is on the design of the buildings, not necessarily the configuration of the lots. And if the, and if the configuration of the building is changed to, to, to the point where they have to go back and change the configuration of the lots, they'll have to do so, because it doesn't be any good to have a lot that you can't build on.
Correct.
Well, I, I'm, I'm willing to move forward and vote on your preliminary plat.
The thing I'll tell you is, even if I come back with a final plat, and the mixed-use does not go forward, that's great, I've got plat of lots, but I don't have the right to build what, what I want to build. So that's the protection in place. I, if it was straight zoning, I would agree with you a hundred percent, you probably want to lay it so, but that's not the case here. You've got layers on top of layers that protect you, and, and we would not come back with something totally different and play that game. That's not what we're doing. What I have before you is where we're at. We will come back with the same thing and have that discussion.
Thank you. Any other council discussion? Mr. Mungard, any clarification? Just want to make sure everybody's clear on what we're voting on, and it is the preliminary plat is what the vote is. And seeing no other motions, Mr. Stube.
So I'm just going to interject something here, because I guess, from a developer's perspective, and I, what I would anticipate is that if the council approves this preliminary plat, there's, with, with mixed-use on there, there's an expectation that when we come back for a final plat, that it includes mixed-use, something similar to what we see here today, that talks about style of building, uh, close proximity of the building, and all of that. If, there is an expectation by some members that if I approve the preliminary plat, I don't want to see that when you come back for the final plat. I'm, I'm going to approve this preliminary plat with the expectation that it come back to the city council with something similar to what we've talked about tonight, and not come back, I would anticipate not come back with, with single-family residential, that's.
Correct.
Correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Please vote.
Seven yeas, one nay by Sunday.
Motion passes. Now, we're, well, I'm not sure where we're at exactly. I'm looking to Mr. Mungard, because he started the discussion. That was F-five, which was phase two through five. We're now heading into F-six through nine, which is all related to replat one.
Correct.
Uh, Mr. Mungard, since you started the discussion, I'm going to look, look to you a little bit to guide, um, what your desire is, and maybe what next steps are. Otherwise, we'll just take each item individually as we typically would.
Well, okay, I, I'm not going to beat the dead horse, but I'll just, I'll just make a motion to lay over item E, or item F-six, uh, for, to the next meeting, when we can vote on both it and item E-one at the same time.
Just F-six, or the, or, because earlier you talked about a package?
Well, okay, if I can make the whole, if I can make a package, lay over F-six, F-seven, F-eight, and F-nine, until we can vote, along, vote on those at the same time that we vote on E-one.
Motion by, second was Mr. Sunday?
I'm fine with that.
Okay. Uh, any other council discussion? We got a new voting system, so I want to make sure we're ready. You okay with that? Please vote.
Eight, eight, zero, nays.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item, so that jumps us to item F-ten. F-ten, ordinance eighteen ninety-two, an ordinance to approve a change of zone from A.G. Agricultural to R-four multifamily residential for the property legally described as attractive land, being part of tax lot four, a tax lot located in the northwest quarter of section five, township thirteen north, range twelve east of the six P.M. Sarpy County, Nebraska, generally located on the southwest corner of South one hundred and fourteenth Street and Shram Road. The applicant is Felker Family Farms, Belterra. Is there a motion to approve ordinance eighteen ninety-two? Motion by Councilman Gaines? Second by Councilman Glover. Any council discussion? Please vote.
Eight, eight, zero, nays.
Motion passes. Item F-eleven, resolution R-twenty zero one six-three. A resolution to approve a final plat for the property legally described as attractive land, being part of tax lot four, a tax lot located in the northwest quarter. Section five, township thirteen north, range twelve east of the six P.M., Sarpy County, Nebraska, generally located on the southwest corner of South one hundred and fourteenth Street and Shram Road. The applicant is Felker Family Farms, Belterra, phase two. Is there a motion to approve resolution R-twenty zero one six-three? Motion by Councilman Clu? Second by Councilman Sunday. Any proponents? Any opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
Eight, eight, zero, nays.
Related item, a resolution to approve the First Amendment to the Belterra subdivision agreement. Is there a motion to approve resolution R-twenty zero one six-four? Motion by Councilman Stube? Second by Councilman Mungard. Any proponents? Opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
Eight, eight, zero, nays.
Motion passes. Item F-thirteen, resolution R-twenty zero one six-seven. A resolution to approve the management and exempt to employee salary ranges for fiscal year twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one. Is there a motion to approve resolution R-twenty zero one six-seven? Motion by Councilman Ingberg? Second by Councilman Jaworski. Do you have any proponents? Any opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
Eighteen zero naes.
Motion passes. Next is committee reports. I think Public Safety met. Do you have a report? Mr. Gaines.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Public Safety Committee did meet tonight. Uh, we're just addressing a couple of issues that we've been addressing over the last few months. The first one is ordinance 1886, specifically the mayor's power to enact a curfew. So, I believe, one of the things that we've been trying to do is make it so that all of this power is not in one person's control. Uh, another one of the issues was the 72 hours that the mayor could enact this curfew for. Uh, there's a lot of redundancies in the language, and there's also some contradicting language in the ordinance. And so, we fixed some of that. We did ask the city staff to come back and give us one final copy of what we probably will propose, um, to come before the whole council. So, you guys should all get a copy of that before, after, after our next meeting, I would assume. Um, but one of the things that we, we are recommending, um, or one of the things that we are, we asked the city to type up was basically, we want the mayor to have that power, um, and we don't wanna take away any other powers to declare emergency. This is strictly for, per curfew. Um, but we also wanted some input from the president of the council and also the chief of police before the mayor would be able to make that curfew declaration. So, that's kinda the direction that we're going. And after our next meeting, we'll either vote to bring it to council or vote not to, and then the rest of you'll have a chance to, to look at it and vote on it. Uh, the other item that we discussed was the, uh, mobile vendor. Um, if everyone recalls, we had that ordinance come up where we were going to ban them on a, a stretch of South Washington Street. Um, and what we're really trying to do is develop alternative places for these mobile vendors to go. So, and not just develop places, but for example, behind Twisted Vine where they've been having their, their food truck. Um, if, and nobody noticed that the alleyway has been repaired. It was a really bad dish repair, so it's not directly related to this, but that is something that we asked to have repaired, you know, so it was more attractive for their, their clientele. I know they've been parking the food truck in the parking lot behind. And then one of the things that I brought up this evening was, we don't wanna pass an ordinance and not have options for the future for the west side of the street if we have some options for the east side. So, city staff is putting together a little outline of things that we discussed. I don't know if there are things that can be codified or not because the recommendations, but we do wanna make it very clear to, um, to restaurants or, or places like Twisted Vine, to food truck owners, that we're not anti-mobile vendors. We just wanna make it safe. We wanna make it fair. We wanna make it right. And we're, we wanna invite them into the city, be able to provide other alternatives for places for them to go that they don't have to park on Washington, hang out in traffic and potentially cause a, a safety issue. So, and that one, we did, kind of made a decision tonight that, at the next meeting, we'd like to make it a recommendation or not to the council so that this is something that we can move forward with. So, that's the end of my report, Mayor.
Thank you very much. No other committees who met? Um, any comments from the floor? Seen none. Any council comments? Couple of things from the last couple of weeks. Oh, Mr. Stube, go ahead.
Yeah, I know we've talked about this before. I guess I'd just like to get a, kind of an update as far as where we are because I know that there was some discussion related to Soloway's collection within the city of Papillion. And I'd kinda like just to get an update as far as where that discussion is. And obviously, I have an opinion with regard to that and had some conversations with my, my colleague over there related to that also. So, just kinda give me an update as far as where we are, where the discussion is and, and what's, uh, what's being talked about and proposed.
Ms. Powers.
So, the public, uh, the Public Facilities Committee met and discussed, uh, getting information together and meeting again in October to get a recommendation prior to the renewals in December.
Mr. Mungard.
Well, yeah, I'll just follow up on what Mr. Stube said. We had some conversation. In fact, he, he indicated that he was aware of somebody, an, an experienced person who's done this before, who might be able to help the staff put together the RFP, gather the information that we're, that we're looking for. I don't know if, you know, and frankly, I just told Mr. Stube, you know, it might, it might be a good idea, but I'll leave it to him to move forward with it. So, I'll throw that out there.
Okay. And if there is something to share, then just let Ms. Powers know. Okay, thank you. Any other council comments? From the last couple of weeks, uh, the Health Department and all the jurisdictions are still meeting every single week. Nebraska did move to phase four this week. Um, from a practical perspective, I think what that means is what, almost everything that had been in a directive health measure moved to recommendations, um, strong recommendations, but they're recommendations. And, uh, the difference between being a DHM and a recommendation is actually enforcement. If it's in the DHM and violated, I think it's a classified misdemeanor where if it's just a guideline, well, it's, the police aren't enforcing it. So, move to strong recommendations. Um, restaurants, I think, remove some of the restrictions. They, they used to only have six people at a table and spread out. They can move closer to their capacity. Outside venues can move to 100% of their capacity. If they're doing large crowds like 400 and 500, they still need to get a plan to the Health Department for approval. Um, so, there's still some things in place, but they, that was state every, statewide except I think Lancaster County moved to phase four. Um, from Papillion's perspective, you'll start, uh, I think the landing is, uh, slowly opening up even a little bit more than they had. The library's making some changes. So, if you've got questions of city facilities themselves, make, uh, let us know. Um, but hopefully, we're doing a lot of communication around those items. But, uh, the jurisdictions are still me, uh, meeting every Thursday. So, if you've got any questions, shoot those to us and we have those calls first thing Thursday morning with the Health Department. Um, we also had the United Cities meeting, and we got another one coming up. If there's anything you're interested in from a legislative perspective as far as new bills or changes we want made, uh, now is the time to, uh, raise that awareness to us. Um, because of COVID and the legislature got, uh, put off, um, it'll be tight to get them things into the next session because, uh, normally, they would've wrapped, wrapped up the session, then they would've had summer to have preliminary, um, work on bills and have hearings and that type of thing. Well, they didn't, they kinda lost the summer because of COVID, and then they restarted the session and that just wrapped up. Um, but make us aware if there's anything you're interested in legislatively. Um, Sarpy, uh, Chamber kicked off its next leadership, uh, program. And so, it gave a bus tour to, uh, the people in that program. And then, uh, we also attended, um, Mr. Green and I met with the Downtown Business Association Executive Board. They're having some changes as far as leadership and maybe even philosophy of things they're doing. So, we just wanna make sure we maintain a good, uh, relationship there. Um, and then, uh, Macavica Physical Therapy, which has a location in Papillion. We were one of their first locations. Uh, actually just opened a second location at 72nd and 370, so they've, they've continued to invest in Papillion. So, that was a nice thing. Um, reminder, um, again, the, uh, at the landing, um, we have the Honor Flight display. If you're not familiar with that, Patriotic Productions, who puts on the Honor Flights for Nebraska, um, they've wrapped up all of the Honor Flights, but they've documented every single Honor Flight and they put a display together. And we're gonna be the host of that. Probably only the second or third location that's hosted that. Um, I think they just had it out at the state fair, and that's gonna go up Thursday, I believe. Isn't that right? And that'll be up until Sunday, so be sure to get down to the landing and see that and help spread the word. And then, uh, timely of the conversation we were having about housing types and affordability, we had already scheduled meetings with a developer and the council. Um, so, um, look at your, uh, your calendars for next Tuesday. Um, and you should already have that on your calendar. If you don't, uh, let Kendra know and we can make sure you get plugged into one of those. Because it was really to start this very discussion we were having tonight, so it is timely. Um, but it's, it is a big philosophical conversation with a lot of decisions to be made. So, we're not gonna address it in one meeting or with one development. It'll be a continuing dialogue. Any other council discussion? Productive meeting tonight. Um, is there a motion to adjourn? Motion by Councilman Clu? Second by Councilman Gaines. Please vote.
Eighteen zero naes.
We are adjourned.